Alright, so this is the Williams Board of Education Policy Committee. It is September twenty fifth, it is four P M. Uh, you really only have the policy review today for um, policy five one three one point eight one personally owned electronic mobile devices used in school. Uh, and I sent this to you yesterday, I'm gonna share my screen. Cause since yesterday, I just made a couple of things, just as I rewrite it again. So the minor tweaks that I have on here, since this went out to you, just making sure, so if the building principal is out. Hold on, I have to figure out. There we go, sorry. If a building principles out, I wanted to make sure that uh, it said administrator or building principal designate or designate. So where I just made comments on the side, we could make it say administrator, or we could say building principal or designate. Um, the weird thing about this is if is a principal or out and they were covered by. Uh, a teacher who has an O ninety two, who which means you're a certified administrator, they're not an administrator, they would be the designate, so that would qualify. Um, so I just think anywhere where it says by the principal should say um, by the pr- principal or their designees, so. That's the um, the change since yesterday. The other piece that just to walk you through kind of where this came from. I took our old policy uh, and basically just threw it away. Um, because there it was just not worth starting from that, it was this policy, it's very, very different. You really could consider two pieces to this. You could leave this personally owned electronic mobile devices in school. Um, geared towards instruction and redo this one separately and make this. A cellphone policy alone or electronic communication devices, meaning texting, things like that. Um, or you could just rewrite, get rid of that old one and make this a new one, so that's something to think about. The second thing is, is where this came from, I basically took. Uh, all of the recommendations from whether it be Cabe or the state, um, other sample model policies that were given. I took them and I spun them to match what the discussion has been. For what you're trying to implement. Um, and so basically you've got the introduction, you've got the statement that they can have their cellphones, but they have to follow. You know, the restrictions that are contained in the policy, you've got the um. That you know, whether it's during the instructional day or outside the instructional day. It says that um. You may include restrictive use devices such as a yonder pouch, that way you're not limited to that, it's something you were to change down the road, you could change it without having to. Go through policy, it gives you a little flexibility. Um, it allows the the piece on the transportation and quite frankly, monitoring that and saying no, you can't use it on tra- on transportation is. Extremely hard and some of our kids have long rides. Um, it does go into the authorized use section which we created, so you know, the folks that said they had a child um, with uh, anxiety or. They, you know, so whatever the issue was, could be diabetes, this should address those things between the healthcare and medical plans and I I E Ps. Um, it has to be something documented. Um, it's got the other restrictions in there, this school sponsored activity C was really meant to be during the instructional day. Um, and then you've got that they can use it on school to provide transportation, after school programming was the sports and clubs and things that people wanted. I added this line in that um, may have restricted use, that doesn't necessarily mean a yonder pouch. But I added that line in so that if a a club advisor wanted just the off and away. Uh, that that could be something that they could do if it was getting in the way. Once a kid was ready to be picked up, they could text their parents, things like that. Um, the other pieces here was something that was kind of connected to discipline. And I kind of reversed a little bit, I know Arthur, I think I said to you, I wasn't gonna put, I was gonna try and do more of an administrative reg- regulation separate. I put a lot of it into this, um, just for clarity for people, just making sure people knew what they could have, you know. Kind of what's not appropriate, that's in there, and then what happens with the unauthorized use, if you're using it, what is the issue, what happens? Um, you know, it doesn't get into like, if it's the first infraction, here's what happens, if it's the second infraction, here's what happens, if it's. Is it a suspension, is it, you know, what it, whatever it is. It does a lot of the may, it leaves it up to the uh, principal, what it does turn in though, uh, layout is that disciplinary action will be taken. Um, and that depending on what number time it is, if it's the first time, it's the third time, if it's really egregious or not. Um, it would, you know, the principals responsible for administering whatever disciplinary actions there. Um, gets into that the parent must pick it up. Um, and if it's repeated, that you know, further restrictions could be put in place, meaning their uh, stu- their cellphone would have to be in the office all day long. Not being able to be carried, um, we have the, you have the ability to do that in your policy. Um, and then that you basically don't have any responsibility, if it's, you know, lost or damaged or stolen, it's their responsibility. So those are just a, just kind of a quick overall piece to. Looking at all of the various policies that were um, there, it li- this literally was twenty eight pages and it went down to uh, just a couple. Um, and so trying to be really succinct about what you're wanting to do. Providing a little flexibility to administrators, but being clear about what you want for outcomes, so. Beyond that, now is your time, I guess, to make comments, if you wanna go section by section. Um, you tell me.
Yeah, so I have a bunch of things, some of which are substantive and some of which are just kind of nitpicky English things, so. I have a lot, so I'll let Brianna go first if she wants to bring anything up.
Nope, that's fine, let's take it from the top.
Cause mine stuff is very, some of it's very boring. Um, let me just, while it's on the top of my mind, Phil, when you brought up the fact that this is, this is kind of a rewrite of the policy. And you talked about maybe splitting, splitting up the policies, it got me, I was thinking about this while I read this and this, so this policy covers cellphones and electronic communication devices, but it doesn't necessarily. Cover electronic devices in general, which might include like video games, cause you know, all that kind of stuff is portable and things like that, so I don't know. I don't know if we necessarily need two policies for that, but I would like to see that covered somewhere and just be like, hey, don't have these things either kind of thing. Or not, not at least not during the school day, but they're not really communications devices. Um, I mean, I guess they could be, but.
And that might be, that might be why, a reason to keep this, you you also have an iPad um, policy that needs to be redone to to match Chromebooks. But it's like the three of these things could be, you can keep this personally owned electronic mobile devices in school, really simple. And tied to the things you're talking about, if they don't communicate, if they do, they could fall under the cellphone ones, that's, that's up to you.
Yeah, anyway, I have to go through that now, just something, something else to think about for the future. Um, so, okay, so in paragraph four, it starts with the district, dis- uh, during the instructional day, electronic communications devices, so. You have spiked out there, must remain in silent mode, so. I would wanna put something around that, that includes things like airplane mode, or like, I guess, I guess someone told me there's a school mode. That kind of eliminates things during the, you could set times, so it makes it basically an airplane mode, but on a timer, like during the school day. It's just one of those things where I wouldn't wanna say. I I, when I look at the policies, I try to eliminate as much wiggle room as possible for some of these, some people out there, a- and it becomes a thing where. Someone could say, yeah, it wasn't in silent mode, it was in airplane mode, or yeah, you know, that kind of thing, so. Um, I'm trying to think of how you'd word it, some uh, I guess, a restrictive mode or something along those lines, like, so that would cover silent, it would cover airplane, it would cover school. It would cover all of that.
We could try and match it to the sounds, because the, all the different names, and that's what the attempt that this was under the unauthorized.
Okay.
I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, it does.
See if I. I'm just making a comment off the side here. And I'm gonna paste this in here, so. So something like cellphones must remain in silent mode, and maybe in parentheses, no sounds, no bells, no ringing.
Yeah, like, or a mode that restricts sounds, vibrations, all that kind of stuff.
Yep.
Something along those lines.
Yeah.
Um, I think I asked about this before and. Um, I don't remember your answer, Phil, I'm sorry, but when it comes to things like. Um, the bus for transportation and and like that, do they have their own, they have their own rules, right, or do we?
We dictate, yeah, we do.
Okay, alright, so then that would eliminate that. Um. So, paragraph starts school building principles. Uh, I think this, this to me, this is just an English thing, I, but I could be very wrong. Um, it says in order to maintain the principles of this policy and consistent with the unique circumstances, so. I was gonna say, should it either, should it either say be consistent, or should it say consistently, or is that, or is consistent correct?
It's B.
You like this?
Yeah.
Because it says to maintain, and then you have and be consistent, if you take up, yeah.
Okay.
Don't mind my grammarly, it's just gonna underline.
No, that's fine. Um, you mentioned the principal or their designate, that was one of the things I had on here.
Yeah, I'll update all those, as long as you're both good with that, I just think it makes sense, okay.
Um, so C, school trips and sponsored activities, it says. Um, wireless communication devices outside the duration of the normal instructional day, is duration the right word?
If we just take that out, outside the normal, outside of the normal day?
Yeah, because to me, that one kind of signifies that you're not in school, but this rule still applies.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Outside the normal instructional day.
Okay, and then.
Do you wanna say beyond instead of outside?
That's good.
I mean, is there anything that's in the morning?
Well, so, put, put yourself in the, the, the thought process of the D C trip here. So the D C trip is outside of the, the, you know, normal instructional day, they're in Washington D C on a Saturday. Um. So it's, I guess that would work, right? I think that's fine.
Okay, um, on the next page, beginning of the first paragraph of the next page, so this was kind of a, a thing for me. Um, do we wanna spike out something in here that essentially says. Posting to any social media is prohibited, whether it be your own, you're taking pictures or audio recordings or whatever of yourself. Or other people, because this seems like. You're, you're trying to get people, trying to get the kids not to do it to other kids, which is good. But it's also, I wouldn't want them posting to social media during the school day themselves. You know, no selfies, no, you know, any of that kind of stuff, where they're, they're not, they're not doing anything to anybody else, they're not hurting anybody, but it's still disruptive to the, to the day. So I don't know if you wanna spike out anything addressing social media as a whole in general. Um, in particular on this, or if that's something we wanna look at separately?
Hmm, I don't know.
It doesn't say other people. So to me, it would include like, all.
Right, but I could have, I could easily have. A child argue with me and say that their selfie that they posted in front of the bathroom is not profane and decent, obscene, threatening, discriminatory, bullying or harassing, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
It's disruptive to the school day, don't get me wrong, but it's not any of those things.
Well, I would say in that situation too, it's uh, infringing upon privacy of others, even if there's not another person in the. Photo, it's getting in the way of what they're doing, yes.
What if you did that? I, I'm, so the way this was written initially, it was in, an A and a B, and it didn't, it didn't flow right, I didn't like it. And so the intent of this is really that you're not using your cellphone to do any of these things here. And then the second part of it was, you're not allowed to use, take recordings or photographs or videos, not necessarily tied to this.
Okay.
It could just be your, your friend that you were taking, they're doing something funny and they're saying, take my picture, you, that's not supposed to happen either, so.
I, I, I'm in favor of separating them, I think that, I think that makes it a bit clearer. Cause I think that first paragraph co- covers things that would be detrimental to other students, and the second paragraph covers things that. Wouldn't be detrimental to other students, but are still disruptive to the school day.
Yep.
I'm good with it.
This is that address your.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I do too, I, I, I think it's separate, you know, you, you're trying to separate it from this stuff, I get the point of it, yeah, okay.
Um, I'm almost done, paragraph, should a student be observed, uh, two paragraphs down. Um. So any student refusing to give the device to school personnel, I would say would be subject to further discipline, because to me. It, that serves two purposes, one, it shows that you're not just doing this the first time around, and two. That you've already done the appropriate things the first time, and then, you know, you now you have a student who's, who's not gonna give you your, their, their, their cellphone with all this, and it becomes, okay, well now. There's a level up, we have to go here, cause you're refusing to, to do, do this.
Yep.
Um, and the last thing I have is the last part of the next paragraph. Um. Further restrictions, including needing to leave the device in the office during the instructional day, I just put a little note in there to have it say. Leave the device in the office prior to the start of the instructional day? Because when you're talking about the repeated use, so the first time use, you know, if it happens in the middle of the day, you go and you bring your, you go and you bring your phone to the office. And it stays there for the day, but if you, if it's a repeated thing, now you're gonna be expected to bring it to the office at the beginning of the day, so you don't, there's no. Worry about doing it, keep doing it in the middle of the day, so to me, putting it under the repeated s- section, putting it, you know. Prior to the start of the instructional day, just means that you're gonna have to get, basically get off the bus or parent drop off, go right into the office, drop it off and then go.
What about?
Sorry, go ahead.
Upon arrival?
Sure.
What if, what if you fully remove that blue, and the reason why is Brianna's on her third offense. And her phone is, um, you know, she's a repeat offender. It's gonna be in the office, I guess it doesn't matter, right, it's, it's, I'm just trying to think if, is, is there something in the middle of the day where that could happen?
Yeah, but that's when you wouldn't be, that's when you wouldn't be repeated, to me, that's when you're, when you're on your third offense or fourth offense. You know, what, however many we, we end up going with, is, you know, that's when you should be dropping off at the beginning of the day.
Yeah, so is that what you're saying there?
Yeah, either prior to the start of the instructional day, or like Brianna said, upon arrival, that's fine too.
Prior to the start of the day is like. Who's gonna be there, the custodian to let them in, I don't know, that's.
The instructional day.
Yeah, okay, and then I would get rid of needing to and just write.
To school. Cause it might not be, if they arrive at ten A M, whenever they arrive, right?
Yep.
Leaving, you're saying, making that leaving?
Yeah.
Including leaving?
Mm-hmm.
What is it wants to do there? You don't know, there's usually something to be resulting from the restrictions, including the, left in the office per arrival school, do you like that, their clarification, that's grammarly for you?
Yeah, it seems okay.
Mm-hmm. Oh.
Okay, and that's, that's all I had, other than that, like my, one of my biggest sticking points was the. Principles or the designees, which you already addressed, um, and the other thing was the, the issue with social media posting, which I think separating that paragraph into two takes care of that.
Brianna, you got anything?
No, I'm just um, thinking about some recent communications we received and remembering that policies are living documents, so. Um, we can always update and change specific things, parts about it.
Do you think, uh, and this is what, when I was really working on this, one thing I was trying to focus on, was providing enough flexibility that. Uh, because one of the, around changing things, you know, if someone said, someone said, hey, I'd love to see eighth graders have the flexibility to be able to do something, you know. I don't know what that's gonna look like in modification, um, you know, if it was, you know, if. If the, if I don't have any issues for three months, can I not use my yonder pouch and just, you know, put the things away? I don't know that the, the way the policy is written right now. Does it allow the administrator the flexibility to do that, I was trying to go back and apply it, um. Because it's really around this paragraph right here. Meaning, I, I guess my question is, if you decided, hey, you know what, it's been four months, the kids are doing great. We can continue to use the pouches for students that are struggling with this, they'll still have their phone on them. Um, do, it allows you, if you wanted, to loosen restrictions. Um, again, if you wanted to, um. But you don't need to, you could be consistent across the board, and again, from my perspective, the management or ver- is uh, of all. For the greater good is way easier, way easier. Than just knowing, you know, staff would have to be like, hey, does, is Arthur supposed to have a yonder pouch or not, that's the challenge of the, of. You know, the flexibility.
Yeah, I know, there's some people who aren't happy with a, a blanket. Across the board thing like this, but it's the easiest thing to enforce. Uh, it creates no issues with kids amongst their friends, like, oh, you got to use your phone, or hey, let me use that, or something, you know, gets, could get another kid in trouble, you know. I get that it's tough, and I get that it's, it's, it sounds harsh, I don't think it's very harsh personally, but. I, I think in across the board thing is the way to go, I don't, I don't. I don't, I think allowing, allowing. Use cases based on behavior. Is gonna lead to problems, I mean, I understand there is authorized use cases that I fully agree with down here. But I think allowing use cases based on, on behavior for certain students, I think it's gonna just lead to problems.
I, I tried to do a little bit of research, just to see if there was anybody that you doing something like that, I couldn't find anyone, it was either blanket. Um. You know, or they were do, you know, like a yonder pouch, or they were just doing off and away, and there was no reason. You know, the flexibility at the high school might look a little bit different, especially with an E O Smith, because they're an open campus. Um, maybe that's a little bit different, but we're, we're pre K through eighth grade, the other piece that I wanted to make sure that you thought. Um, is that this policy has to apply to pre K through eighth. And I think it does, I didn't see anything, which is why, you know, say. This line here in location designated by the school district administration, which may include restrictive uses such as yonder pouch, well, they're not gonna have those at the elementary school. But there's still a restriction, so off and away, right, I mean, we can, that's the, the principal designation, and that could be spelled out further. In the um, handbook. Um, I did have a section in here that was elementary and middle, and it just, it didn't sit, it wasn't, it was said the same exact thing. It was weird.
Yeah, I think that line covers it, because you have the may include restrictive use devices, um, but the whole polit- the policy. Eh, in and of itself covers the entire district, but, you know, where we're implementing restrictive uses to a specific area, and that's, that's. What that is, and, I mean, quite honestly, we have a couple extra yonder pouches, and if there was really a problem in the elementary school with a, a couple of kids. You could implement it there, just on, on a case basis.
Right.
So.
And that's the flexibility that you, you would have, which is what you're looking for. Um, alright, so, what are your thoughts then on, do you wo- would, because the number matters? I know that's a silly thing, um. Do, and I, I have this out to uh, our attorney as well. Um, and uh, M K as well as the middle school principal, cause just, you know, trying to make sure that there's some feedback there. Um. I could put this out as a draft, if you wanted to, to the, you know, kind of publicly, and also do a draft, you know, to. With families, so that if you wanted to bring this to your next board meeting, you could do that. Um, but do you wanna change the name, do you wanna do a five one three one point eight one A. Point eight, point eight one, one, like you could change the number, you really gotta figure out if you wanna totally replace this one.
Um. My feeling is. So, we can move it forward to the board and. At the board meeting, we can make the suggestion, cause this goes to first read, so we can also make the suggestion in November. To do something about the number if need be, right?
Yep.
Yeah, so, I think we should move this forward to the board, to get their, the full board, to get their input, and then. Um, we can look at the existing five one three one dot eight one and see. You know, what the comparison is, if there's, you know, we can talk about if we want to. Keep it separate for things that aren't necessarily phones, um, but our electronic devices or disruptive devices. Um, and then go from there, I, I, I'm in favor of moving this forward to the full board today. And we can deal with the number when it comes to vote in November.
Yeah, that's fine by me, I mean, I will tell you just from my perspective, the other portion of this policy, the bring your own device. It, there's too much overlap right now, I would just dump this, and when you redo your iPad. Um, policy, call it iPad, Chromebook, and any personally, you know, I own device, that is.
Okay.
Just, it leaves you a little opening in case there's ever something that for instructional reasons, they can use something, that they still have to, you know. But it's not necessarily a cellphone, we're providing those devices, part of me also says this could just go away, but I mentioned your point.
Might be good to reference when we update the other one.
Yeah, so, um, I guess what I'll do then is I will make. The final edits to this, you know, matching in the sounds and things like that, uh, I'll send off a clean copy to you. Once you get it, just give me the okay, yup, everything else looks good, and then I'll send it out the, as the full draft to the board, do you want me to? Um, put it out kind of publicly facing, so people can see what we're, what's being discussed. Prior to, I mean, I can just put it on the front page of the website, and just reference it in the digital backpack. As, as, as something to, to be seen, if people wanted to provide feedback on it, does it provide enough flexibility, that type of thing?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Um, are you including the watches? I remember you saying something about putting those. In the pouches also.
That is, are you saying to put in the, in the pouches?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's any electronic device that can communicate.
Okay. Um, oh, are you having your staff practice taking a magnet out for um, drills?
I think they were doing the um, the drill training portion today, and the. People that have been identified of who will have the magnets, because the magnet does not have to be screwed to the wall.
Right.
Um, they can just don't have them as part of emergency drills.
So it'll be with the items that they always take?
Yup.
Okay, and then you'll also need to, well. The administrators also will have to prepare for what to do, um, start thinking about what to do for um, students with specific plans.
Correct, and that'll go through a, a five oh four, or uh, you know, there's gonna be some sort of team meeting, whether it's a P P T, a five oh four meeting. Or, you know, a healthcare plan, and that would come through the recommendation of a doctor. And that would come through the recommendation of a doctor on that last one, so, yeah, once it's adopted. Um, and to be quite honestly, it doesn't have to be adopted, it could be, if someone came forward tomorrow with. A diagnosis that someone, a, a medical doctor said. This person needs their, their phone to access, to be able to check their blood sugar, that we would accommodate that right away.
Yeah.
We would do that now. I guess that's my point.
Okay.
The other thing is like, I, I know that. I understand two sides of, of what I'm about to say, I understand the part where. The kids have their, their phones on the bus for long bus rides, I get that. But I do think we need to look at better enforcement of. Of basically cellphone rules on the bus, I don't know how we're gonna do it, I know the bus, you know, bus drivers have to pay attention to the road, I get that. But I just don't, I don't wanna see this fall apart the second school's over, you know what I mean? Yeah, being on the bus is part of that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we will be able to track referrals, I mean, I can tell you whether, you know. If we're getting referrals that are coming off the buses where, where there's issues and cell phones are involved, we'll know. Um, cause there's video of it too. The way people, I think it's Rhode Island that, um, they had a tragic accident where a kid was hit by a bus. And they ended up putting, um, basically monitors on every bus. And there's a cost to that, right? But that's typically how you address. Behavior issues on the bus where it's not the driver, their primary role is to drive the bus, the monitor would be, but there's definitely a cost to that big time.
Yeah, I'm not saying we're ready to do that yet, but I just, you know, like I said, I don't wanna see this, I don't wanna see this progress kind of fall apart the second the bell rings, you know?
Yeah, yup, yeah.
Thinking, not to make light of it, but I'm thinking they're gonna be so busy checking what was sent to them that day, that they're not gonna be wanting to make anything.
Could be, yeah.
But, yeah, and hopefully the older students will, um. Be good role models on the bus and, uh, help the little ones do other things with their time, so, there's hope for that.
Yeah. Okay.
And it, when. So if there was a video made with the cellphone of another, a couple of students on the bus. And that was posted up somewhere or sent to someone, that still is within our jurisdiction.
Oh, yes.
Even though they can have their phone on the bus, if there is something inappropriate, bullying, what have you, then we still address that once we're.
Yeah, you really do, the challenge is you really do need, um, it depends on the severity of, of the issue. Number two, it, it, you really need the support of the parent, cause. You need the parent to say, yes, it's taken down, we can ask the kid to show me their cellphone, and show me your photos. Show me your, your, it's, that's not in there, open your recently deleted, we wanna see that was out of there as well. Um, there's tricks of the trade that we can do, it doesn't mean they haven't sent it someplace else, we can't prove that, we can only prove that it's not on their phone. Um, and we can ask them, you know, we always tell parents, like, hey, it's, you need to make sure this is off of social media, that is not a good look. Um, and that's part of our agreement when we assign disciplinary consequences, that if you're following through on those things, that. This is how we work, if you don't, then it might be. You know, a little bit, little, little stronger in consequences.
It's not pretty clear, just because it's on the bus, yeah.
Correct, and, and it's, I mean. Typically, people will work with us, I mean, I, I, it's a very rare occasion where they won't. Um, because they, you know, sometimes it's their travels, it put in that situation. Okay, anything else? Around that policy?
No, I think I'm good.
Can I just say in case anybody goes back to watch this about this topic, that, um. If you are opposed to the idea of the yonder pouch, we did spend a lot of time discussing other options. And two of the reasons why we chose this method. Um, are because firstly, it alleviates temptation for students, and secondly, because it addresses the. Ability for children to be doing things during transition times, like in the hallways, passing it in the bathroom, so, that is why. Two of the reasons I can think of, um, for me anyway, why this was the, um, the yonder pouch is where the device that we thought would be the most effective. So I just wanna make sure that's out there again somewhere too, because, of course, as, as our community gets to know more about what we're. Trying to do here to help our students, and of course, there's more questions, so, does us well to keep saying those things, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, and Brianna, I'll just piggyback off of that, because speaking from someone who's on the high school board too, I talked to the principal there, cause they're looking at revamping their cellphone policy as well. And I asked him where, you know, the biggest problems with cellphones were, and two of the biggest problems were in the bathrooms and in the hallways, like, it's. Not really in the classrooms, it's, it's the transition is the biggest problem, so, this alleviates that, yup, I agree.
So your future meeting agenda items, you have, uh, a list that we developed last time. I'm gonna, I still haven't done the, uh, the, the meetings, I'll, I'll schedule, can you tell me what days of the week you said? Brendan and I couldn't find what we wrote down, we were talking about scheduling the dates further out, so that we had policy meetings regularly. Was it Wednesdays, or was I making that up?
Wednesdays are good for me.
Like, is Wednesday at four a good time, that if we scheduled, I mean, there's never a good time, I know, but.
I want to have this classroom background, sure. Yeah.
I mean, it's up to you.
Tuesdays are my greatest days, cause they're.
Tuesdays?
Yeah, but I think if I had said that, maybe it didn't work for others, so I can do Wednesdays at four. I'll make it.
Yeah, I could do, I could do Wednesdays, I could do Thursdays, um, if it's early enough, I could do Mondays too, but.
So why don't I, I'll, 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 what I'll do is I'll draft for you, um. Uh, policy schedule for the remainder of the year, I'll aim for it for Wednesdays. And then if you have an issue with any, let me know before we put it out there, so we can make an adjustment on that. And if you should, if we make an adjustment, Arthur, Brianna, you good with Thursdays, I just heard Arthur say Thursday.
Cannot.
Okay, so it's Wednesdays, or what was the other day you said was good?
For me, oh, sorry, Brianna.
Either one of you. She said Tuesdays, you can't do Tuesdays?
It's not, no, I can do, I can do Tuesdays, provided it's not the first Tuesday of the month, like, cause that's the EO meetings, but, uh, if it's early enough, I could do it, actually. If it's, it's an earlier meeting, sure. I mean, do anything around this time, or even a little bit later, it's, I'm fine, actually.
I'll make Wednesdays at four PM kind of a, try to be consistent. Um, and you'll just let me know if there's an issue, and then we can kind of put that information out there, that way can, we can book them, and try and lay out what policies we're gonna do along the way.
Yeah, good idea.
Alright, that is your entire agenda, it's four thirty eight PM, and unless you have something else, I will click stop recording.
All good?
Alright, four thirty eight, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.